The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in the Borough Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Mary Bold School, Lion Banking School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. At this time, we rise and present allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the procedure of justice.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dare.
Here.
Mr. Ruffain.
Here.
Mr. Lego.
Here.
Ms. Panzarella.
Absent.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
Ms. Beebe.
She's running late.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Sam.
Here.
We will form.
Also President Mark Ainucci, Superintendent Dr. Sean McCarron, Business Administrator, Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Jay Yezzi, Principal of Bingham and Downing School, Mr. Steve Peely, Principal of Mary Bold School, Mr. Phil Silva, Vice Principal of Mary Bold School, Mrs. Gladys Hubbard, Child Study Team Supervisor, and I don't see if he's around. He's not here, so. At this time, I need a motion to take a 30-minute recess from our meeting for our meeting greet, and hopefully people will trickle back in after 30 minutes, we will restart the meeting.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz.
Second.
Seconded by Patty. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay.
So, just so everyone knows, there's food in the back, please help yourself. Throughout, you're gonna see four different things. What we tried to do is just pull out different information pieces, so feel free to walk around, take a look. We have some task score benchmark data up front in the white. In the yellow, we have some different business office things regarding before and after care, transportation, food service. In the back, different things that we've done as a district from 2013 to present. And then up front over here, we have our board goals. You'll see on the right-hand side the evidence statements as far as what's been accomplished up to this point currently with our board goals. But please feel free to, you know, talk amongst yourselves, talk with people here, walk around, and then we'll come back to seven.
Sounds good. I need a motion to open back up the minute, the meeting, please.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Patty.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Please let the angel appear. Alright. So, we need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes on January 9th.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Chaz. Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Ruffain.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Ms. Patterson.
I need a motion to approve the financial report period ending January 31st, 2018.
Let's make a motion to approve the financial report.
Motion made by Naomi.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Mr. Ruffain.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
We have a few items on their presentations this month, so I'm going to pass the meeting over to Mr. Ainucci.
Thank you very much. I'll try to make them visible as I go along here. We have three very special guests that we'd like to recognize this evening. I promise I will not take too much of your time. But the first person, Mr. Jerry Leffert, if you can stand up, please. Jerry loves standing in front of people as much as I do. So, Jerry, I want to present this Educational Professional of the Year on behalf of the Runnymede School District. Jerry's worked in the district since 2002. I think he's worked at all three buildings.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah.
In some capacity. Jerry will do just about anything at any time, the second you ask him, he's right there, whether it's a spill in the hallway, or a problem in a bathroom, or something outside, Jerry's always there with a smile on his face. Got it, Mr. Ruffin? Whoever asks him, he does it with a smile, he does it with pride. I wish everybody I've worked with in this profession was as smart as working as Jerry Leffert, so I must say congratulations.
Oh, Jerry, so sorry. I hate to interrupt. Yeah. Maybe there was nothing to that. Okay, one caution. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm sure I have the right one. We have Diane Terrera, come on up. Can you say your name or your address?
Yeah, fine.
I'm calling, so I think I did it off the top. I wrote down a few things as well. Diane was hired in 2011, I believe, to teach second grade over at Downing. She transferred to Bingham School in 2013 as general education teacher. And in 2016, she became an inclusion teacher, working with our special education population over at Bingham. Each year Diane has been moved to a new position, she's basically cried. Long time break, someday I'll have to say something personal. Not because she was upset, because she doesn't think she'll do a good job. She just, her confidence level when she starts something new is not as high as it is when she ends it, but she always ends it with a "me." Everything she does is wonderful in the classroom. Her kids end up loving her. I can honestly say Diane would be good at whatever teaching position she was placed in, but she's just a great teacher, okay? As a teacher, she's compassionate, and she's dedicated, as you would want a colleague to be. She truly cares about not only her students, but her colleagues, but the community that she grew up in. She's a Runnymede girl. Jokingly, whenever I see her and her family, I always point out that she's hanging out with my favorite Bergman. But tonight, you're in fact my favorite Bergman. Fiddly, when presented with her this award in front of her class, she cried. Not because she was upset, but she did not think she was deserving. I'm here to say that you're wrong, because she deserved this recognition, that's why she said wrong.
Oh.
Picture over here. You can crop me out of this picture. And last but not least, Mrs. Shriver, come on up. Hired in 2000, right?
I think so.
2000? As Ms. Linda Daley, you're now one of the oldest tenured teachers in our school.
Wow.
We're one of, uh, I mean, getting up there.
Alright. Eric.
I mean, my hair, I had more hair, and it was not so gray when it arrived. When I was hired in 2002, one of the first persons I met was my new colleague across the hall, and it was Linda. She said, "If you ever need anything, just ask." And unfortunately for her, I've asked her for advice and guidance for the past 16 years. Whether it's professional in nature, or something simple, like, "Does she know any good activities for my kids to do in their spare time?" Linda always knows, because her kids have always done it. Beyond her teaching in the classroom, Linda always is involved with a cause. Animal shelters, green teams, supplies to needy families for hurricane relief, she's always teaching her students the importance of giving back. Linda juggles her career and her family with the consistency we all can appreciate. Family's the most important thing, but not, but not only teaching her students content, but more importantly, teaching them to give back to their community, and the purpose of why they're doing so. It is for those reasons that Linda Shriver so deserves this award.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Yes.
We're still having fun. Still, I do want to say, we have recognized, we recognize the staff members in front of their classrooms.
Yes.
In their classrooms, as well as Jerry's in the hallway as well, some of his colleagues. On Friday, we had a luncheon, where our teachers were recognized by their colleagues as well. And we also, I know Mr. Peely's worked with the local Acme.
Mr. Silbag.
Mr. Silbag, Mr. Peely, Mr. McCarron, sort of work with the Acme, if you like to say. Recognizing us, I believe he'll be receiving some awards throughout here as well, recognizing our staff members.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so we also have bucket filler, does something show?
Hello.
Hi.
Kristen Callahan. One of the things that we did four years ago, we were lucky to get Mrs. Yezzi as our principal of Bingham and Downing, was we decided that we really needed to have a comprehensive program in schools that was kindergarten through third grade, and everybody knew and got. And we decided the bucket filler program was really the greatest thing. The kids absolutely love it. We utilize it every day, pretty much, and in every program. And the fact is, is that the kids, even when I see the older kids, they use it sometimes when they see me. But I worked with the third graders, and we decided that, they're always asking me, We are bucket fillers every day and everywhere. Everyone has an imaginary bucket that we need to fill with good things every day. "He should do a video," because I send them videos when we do Respect Week and everything
Bucket fillers are those who help without being asked.
like that, and they're like, "Why can't we do a video like that?" So, I decided, okay, I'm gonna try and do this, even though I'm not technically savvy.
They say nice things and do nice things for others. Bucket fillers spread good feelings all over the school.
So, we put one together, because I said to the kids, "You are going to teach the future
Good morning, Miss Hall.
Good morning, boys and girls.
children of Bingham and Downing what a bucket filler is."
Our first story. Our friend can't find a place on the rugby stick.
So I can honestly say that every third grader is in this video.
That can make a person feel left out.
Alright.
Watch what happens when a bucket filler comes to the rescue.
Whether they want to speak or not. And they didn't have to speak, and I told them they didn't have to, but every child
Alright, boys and girls, you can leave your stuff at your desk.
is represented in this video, so enjoy. Thank you.
Come on down to the floor, we're gonna read the next chapter in our box.
Come on, dear, you can come sit with us.
In our second story, our friend has come back into the classroom and needs help to find out what is going on. Sometimes we need a helping hand, and it might not be there. That is when a bucket filler can step in and save the day.
Timmy, what are we doing?
We're in the bathroom, so you have to figure out how to fight itself.
Why don't I go on to the other one?
What are we doing? Our work time. No question.
I should A1 study?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
Some of the other students are being bucket divvers. You will see when a bucket filler takes the time, stops the people from being bucket divvers, and fills a bucket.
It's not funny. You can't.
I'm smiling.
I have no problem.
Funny, yes.
Now that you know what it's like being a bucket filler, do you know why the students at Bingham and Downing Elementary work every day to fill buckets? We are a bucket filling school.
Oh. They lost falling on the stairs, and this is how you get fond of it, it's gonna fall.
Thank you so much for putting that together for us, and make sure you thank the third person. No. Thank you. I could, I wanted to take a few moments of everyone's time to discuss some training that I went to on February 3rd, because it's extremely important for our new. Could you just give us a Dan for me, please? If you could take a purple sheet. Dr. McCarron, although they swore, New Jersey School Board swore, they were not going to give these pamphlets out to anyone who didn't attend their training. These guys must have some magic, because here they are. This is also a PDF. Obviously, I'm not gonna take the time to, there's not more than that? Nope, I got more. To go through this whole entire pamphlet, but we are. This Dan, but thank you. I'm like, you can have it as well. There's nothing on, there's nothing on there that you need to not know. So, there's a new superintendent evaluation system, and so, the reason why I went to this training is because it's not mandatory that we have to use this one this year, however, after the training, I came in and I met with Mr. Ainucci, and I, we decided that we would like to start it this time, because, so just so we can practice for next time. So if you look at your purple sheet, there's a few things on there. There's a new, something new, it's called a pre-conference. Our teachers have pre-conferences before they get evaluated and observed, so I wanted to, so what that is, a pre-conference, is it's going to be an executive session, and it's just, Mark will love the fact that he gets to like tell us everything that he like highlight himself, which, you know, hope he really loves to do, but it's just a discussion. We can talk about questions, concerns, but it doesn't go any further, it's just a discussion about what is going on in the district. We're going to do that in executive session on March 20th at our board meeting. So then, Mr. Ainucci will go in and put everything in this system, again, you can read through this booklet, and he, I asked him after our discussion if he could do that in one month, so he'll do that by April 20th. Then it's going to give us almost a month, and I have to tell you that, I don't know if everyone knows this, but I'm gonna say it, so that I, I know that you know it. We lose CUSAC points if we don't have a full board. So, it's like, I'm gonna be on you this year about completing this. It is your legal responsibility as a board member, once you took the oath and you decided that this is what you wanted to do, it's your legal responsibility to complete a superintendent evaluation. Now, some of our new members, you'll see, like, there's, there's something on there that says like "not observed" now. So you may not know some of the things that, but I also asked Mr. Ainucci to provide documentation, and again, you can look through this. But I just wanted to make sure that by May 15th, if you don't have it done, we're gonna stay after the meeting and deal with it, because everyone's going to deal with this year. And I hate to be like that, but unfortunately, I need to be. It was, it's embarrassing when I have like seven or six out of nine people complete a superintendent evaluation, like, that's our job. And it's not fair, Mr. Ainucci, as well. Then, after that, New Jersey School Boards will send me the results, and we're gonna have a special meeting, so if you can mark your calendars, on June 5th. It's just gonna be the board, it's gonna be executive only, and that's where we're gonna discuss everything that we put in the, each was put in the observation. With that being said, then I have, as board president, 10 days to make a final written response. So, I was telling Mr. Ainucci, so say three of us really feel negatively about something, that's not the majority of the board. We're going to, what we do now is, I'm going to, it has to be, like, five or more of us have to feel a certain way, and then some, because we can all have our individual feelings, but if the majority of the board doesn't feel that way, then it's not really noted anymore. So that I will type up a final written response that must reflect the majority, and I will give it to him within 10 days. So I told him I would give that to him by June 15th, and then that'll give him three to four days to look over it, and on June 19th, we will have, so that's our meeting, we will have our, you know, we'll have another executive to, and that's what the stars are for. The stars mean we're going into executive, and the dates are all there for you. Does anybody have any questions on that? In case you do, I put something that I thought was probably the most important page of this, which is page 5 on the back, which shows you how things are supposed to work, and how they will be working from here on out. So, we're gonna start planning, as this is going on, we're already gonna start planning for next year. Because if you look, that's supposed to be going on in June and July. It's another reason why we wanted to have a July meeting, because we can be updated. So, does anybody have any questions, issues, concerns? It's online again, and to me, they made it a lot easier for us, and when I attended the training, it wasn't just board members, it was superintendents as well, and they felt that this was just much better. It has different standards, it's almost like a teacher evaluation. So you can take time to read this, look it over. I know that in last week, there was a webinar, I don't know if they're gonna be having another one of that again. You're gonna get some training on this this weekend when you go away as well, so that, so you can, you can bring this, and if you have any other questions, you guys know, you can always reach out to me. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone realized that this is, A, this is the calendar we're gonna, we're gonna follow, B, it's not fair, all the work that everyone in this school district does, if we don't do our part, and we lose, and they, essentially all of us, lose CUSAC points, because our board members aren't doing what they're supposed to do. So that's why I will be, and I will stay on May 15th, because that's a deadline, so if you don't have it before that, then, you know, pack a, pack a bag, because we're gonna stay and do it after the meeting. So everyone has it done by that day. Again, because it's your legal responsibility to do it. Yes.
So, on May 15th.
Yes.
For us to do that.
Well, what's when, what's when?
To the information we're gonna get, is in that meeting on March 20th.
Oh, well, that's a discussion, that's just a discussion. When, after Mark puts in his part, by April 20th, they wait 48 hours to send it out to us. And they said they wait 48 hours, because what if Mark forgets something, or he's lying in bed at night and he says, "I should've added this," or "I should've added that." So it's, but it's like a hard 48 hours, so if he submits it at 2:01 on Wednesday, it opens up to us at 2:01 on Friday. So on, by April 22nd, so we'll have about three weeks to be able to go in and do our parts. And if you wanna meet me here, I'll come deal with you one, I can help you with it one night. Because this, this looks familiar to me, I know that people who aren't, don't have my doc, you know, don't work, it might not look familiar to you, but then if you look at the back, like page 15, or excuse me, it's actually like page 13, this is the breakdown that Mr. Ainucci will get, and then the remarks, it will just be one bulk statement from the majority of the board, instead of saying all nine. Yes.
It makes a lot of sense, and when you look through this, I think you'll be able to do it, so you'll have, you'll have, at the latest, from the 22nd of April to the 15th of May, to do it. Because at the, he probably had them before April 20th, if I know that.
Does anybody else have any questions? Alright. If you do, then you can just email me or call me and let me know. You don't have a book? Sorry, I probably stole yours. I have my own, so. Alright. No. You can.
Our guests, if you have other commitments, I know some people do, because you need to attend those commitments. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Congratulations. I probably should've said that before my case. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to publish comments on agenda items only. Does anybody have any comments on agenda items? If not, we'll continue on with the agenda. Dr. McCarron, Secretary, Curriculum Report?
Okay, so, of course, it's like, one of the busiest times of year in my office for both curriculum and the business, the business side of things. So in terms of curriculum, one thing that we've been doing in our last PD session, we had teachers, it was speak with teachers for articulation meetings, so that way they were kind of talking with teachers at different grade levels, to talk about where strengths and weaknesses were, and ask certain questions as far as different ways students are performing within their classes, or certain things that they want to talk about, as far as teaching practices. So that was extremely beneficial. One thing we used to help with that is our evidence statements, which come from the PRC assessment, it kind of breaks down where our students perform really high, and where they might need more support. So that gives us a base for us to go off of. The other piece of information that I also included in my report this month was benchmark data from the Star Reading and Star Math Assessment. For all of our students, they take the Star Reading and Star Math Benchmark Assessment three times a year. That would be in the fall, the winter, and the spring. For any student who's receiving interventions or might need additional support, they take it five times a year, which means they're taking it every eight weeks, and that's so that way we're able to see how they're doing. When you looked at that data, you would see by, from grade level performance wise, the average percentage of growth or decrease that a grade level saw. Every tenth of a point equals one month, so we were looking for 0.4 growth across each place. In some grade levels, you would see that we saw much more growth, in other grade levels it was on point, with exactly 0.4. So what we do from there is, we take that data, and we find out how students are performing with standards, we talk with individual teachers based on their individual classes, whether or not they did amazing, whether or not they might need more help or support, and trying to really identify those specific needs. One thing that I was pleased to see was, in seventh and eighth grade math, we saw much more growth than we had in previous years, but we had also purchased this year for seventh and eighth grade, a new math series, which ties in with our K through sixth grade math series. So it shows that we're obviously going in the right direction with that math series, and the supports and additional resources were beneficial. Next, along with curriculum, one thing you're gonna see on the agenda tonight is the before and after summer camp, that you're, you would be approving for us to hold for another summer. As you know, this is not a program that we're looking to make money off of, more a resource for families within Runnymede. Last year, I want to say we had 89 students register. We're hoping that, now that it's in year two of the program, that we might have additional students registering for the program, so we were pleased with that. This year, we're looking at tentative dates for right now, are June 25th through August 17th, that we would be holding the program, and we also then align it with, we'll work with Mr. And we also then align it with, we'll work with Mr. Silva with our sports camps throughout the summertime. Um, we work alongside of E S Y and Title I programming, that's run from nine to twelve, but then we hold it from six forty-five AM to six o'clock PM. Not that students are here that entire time, but for our working parents, who are used to having that support during the school year. We have a very tight schedule that we keep students moving throughout the day. We offer breakfast and lunch for students, we offer a snack for everyone, um, so that's all available. Um, on the business end of things, we have preparation of the budget, which is currently taking place. A big thing right now is the fact that the budget address has been moved from the end of February to the middle of March. I have my BA roundtable meeting for the county tomorrow, so I'm waiting to see if anything has changed in regards to dates. We did set up our spring schedule for Board meetings based around budget presentation. Um, I'm kind of hoping that I'm able to keep, I'm able to keep those dates as they are, but I will keep you informed if anything changes. And then the only other thing right now is testing for Park, D L M, the new science test, which is pretty much Park, New Jersey Science, and, um, we're going from there, so.
I have a question.
Answer.
For all of these benchmarks and things, is this every single student?
For the grade level, yes.
So you didn't take out any?
No students were removed. Oh, and then for the Park data, if we look below?
Right. Yeah.
So that's from the fall benchmark to the winter benchmark.
Yep.
Um, and then if you look below that, I know that there was an article that had come out rating schools as far as where they rate regarding state testing. The schools are rated based on where they fall under Park in comparison to every other school. This, it is not taking into consideration the baseline score as far as where schools started in the fourteen, fifteen year, any growth that was seen in fifteen, sixteen, or sixteen, seventeen. I know we had the conversation before of wanting to see a percentage growth, so one way that I was able to present that for you underneath that, and it's actually one of the chart, chart up here, is, um, taking the way that they do it for the state. And what they do is, they take your total number of students who took the assessment. Out of that number of students, they take the number of students who were proficient in the assessment, and they come up with their percentage across the district. So what I did was, I did the same thing for fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, and across the board in Language Arts and Mathematics. Runne Meet showed a three to five percent growth each year, varying between three to five percent. So it does show that our students are performing on the assessment, and they are performing better. With that also being said, I was at a meeting today where the conversation was from the state, stating that we're in our final year right now of the Park Assessment, as far as using Park as a vendor. So whether or not we continue using Park is a question that's up in the air. And as I stated, um, three years ago, when we first brought Park out, it starts from scratch pretty much, where it's a baseline score, and you build up from there. So of course, we're always looking for growth. Um, one of the reasons why we questioned our Q-SAC scores from the county office, and why you voted last month for us to submit a waiver, was because they were using New Jersey S scores from two thousand twelve, thirteen school year to rate us. So of course, we weren't getting points, whereas if you actually look here, we showed growth every single year, and we would actually earn points based on the Q-SAC requirements, based on these results.
Can I say something real quick?
Yeah.
I just want to thank you for doing this, because this is what I've been trying to like get for the last couple of years.
I fully process.
So I really appreciate you doing this. This kind of shows in numbers where you were and where you're going, and that's kind of all, someone like me who's kind of a math nerd, kind of needed to say, so, thank you.
And what's nice about the benchmarks also is it tells us if there's an issue in a location or an area that needs to be addressed. It allows us to address that, not at the beginning or end of the year, but right in the middle, make sure that everything's provided, and that any resources needed are given.
And you know, we're talking about the Park Assessment, uh, our new governor, uh, I think it was before he became governor, about a week before, he was at Asbury Park School District, uh, because the superintendent was gonna be named his Commissioner of Ed. He made a comment there that he was, uh, strongly thinking about dropping the Park Assessment in New Jersey, so. Wait and see what happens there.
That's all I had. That's good. Sit down.
This is for you. District enrollment, my report's studying the saint. Um, a couple of events coming up. We do our preschool lottery, taking place on February twenty-eighth, I believe, here in the library at Volt School, for our non-stable schools. Um, I do want to make note that we are changing preschool times next year, not drastically, um, but we're bumping up to start time a little bit earlier to accommodate, um, some of our classing requirements, is also, well, is helping us out in the afternoons, getting our kids to their athletic events, more time than matter, if we can use our classes for that. So we'll communicate that information to the parents when they're registering, as well as throughout the spring and the summer. It's not gonna come too much, but it's.
Fifteen minutes?
It's a fifteen minute effort.
But it, it'll still be a staggered time, um, with the Volt's pickup and drop-up, I believe you said.
Yeah.
Just to give you that idea. Also, um, I just want to wish our girls and boys' basketball teams luck tomorrow night, right? And then they're playing two different, two different locations, so we'll have some more information as, as that comes up. Uh, I know the P T A is holding their Founder's Day Dinner, should have received an invitation. Uh, I believe the money's due tomorrow, so you'll have my money tomorrow. I got you, I got you. A lot of that check, we'll see. So if you have that, you can always get it in. I know they're always a little bit flexible with the, you know.
If you could just let Mrs. Wilson know by the end of night if you can plan on going.
And I believe that's at the Cove?
Yes.
Was that a couple of years ago as well?
Right on Atlantic Avenue.
Yes. Very dark street though.
It is.
And I do, also want to bring up a few things that we've, I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Buckeye, I know, back at the end of January regarding, um, school safety and security, and unfortunately, things have taken a turn, um, for the worse in that regard. Um, but I just wanted to highlight some things that not only we do as a district, but some plans we have moving forward, making some security upgrades. Um, we have met with Gaudisian architects a couple times over the last month or so. One of the things we, we want to enhance the entrance upgrades, at Bingham and Downing School, that would be, would mean locking, um, the main stairwells, the levels two and three, which meaning anybody entering the building, the only place they could go would be up into the main office. It would also kind of redirect some flow of traffic for the kids and staff during the day, but I guess, it's one of those things, once you get used to it, I think they'll be fine. But again, it's all the main safety of students. There's also a possibility we're looking to move the main office, um, nurse's office over at Downing School, from one side of the building over to the other, uh, where the entrance is for, I believe, the teacher's, teacher's lounge, right? So that, that's like the major configuration at Downing School, so that entry, the new entrance would be, that door's not used right now, is it? It's used for sometimes for for-.
Yeah.
That means when the person would be buzzed in, they'd come right to, you know, Mrs. Swin would be right there in front of them. The nurse would also then have her own bathroom, which was a nice thing, she doesn't have that now. Uh, and we've reconfigured the conference room over there, we moved outside the building as well. And again, it's to kind of limit mobility inside the building, because right now, at Downing School, when someone's buzzed in, they go downstairs, but we still have, they still have access to the second and third floor. You know, we want to tighten, tighten those things up. At Volt School, we're looking to move, we, right now, have two people in the main office, Mrs. Barker, um, is their full-time person, we also have a part-time person there as well, Mrs. Wright. Moving that person out into the lobby area there, and there'd be a desk and monitor as well, so she could have a vis, a better visual of the person, not only the monitor, but to see them, of who they're buzzing through. Um, I know we also talked about reinforcing some windows there as well, some windows if possible, um, so they can buzz in. We're also looking to upgrade all our security cameras. Um, while we have good security cameras, the technology now for them is a lot better. Yeah, we already have, run some of that. Um, as far as security through the day, as I told Mr. Buckeye, um, you know, our entrance at all three buildings, there's always an adult manning the entranceways where the students are coming in. Those doors are open, um, you know, when the kids are coming, but they're immediately locked once, you know, the kid's inside for the day. I know Mr., hey, over this building, just 'cause I see them sometimes, Mr. Good, Mr. Silva are always checking, make sure those doors are secured. It's a staff member's job to make sure they have the key, to make sure they lock it. Same thing at, at Bingham and Downing School, Mrs. Jesse has additional staff outside there for the entranceways. Also throughout the day, staff, Jerry was here, he was on earlier, are always monitoring the doors to make sure everything's secure during the day, because you never know what could happen. I mean, somebody, if you go outside a door sometimes, if a door's defective or something, and ha, breaks that day, why is this door open? And we're always, that's happened to us, I know, at the main entrance at Volt one time, where it literally happened in five minutes before we checked, and it was, you know, a magnet or something, Frank fixed immediately. But they're always monitoring that stuff throughout the day. I had an opportunity to talk with the Chief of Police this morning, as well as some other officers over at Bingham. They will be, they'll, starting tomorrow, uh, all the patrolling officers will have a key fob to get in all three buildings, where they won't have to be buzzed anymore, they're just gonna come in, and they're gonna start doing inside and outside, inside the building patrols, as well as outside the building patrols. Um, again, they're not gonna be disrupting, popping their heads in, just saying hello to the kids in the classroom, just to kind of, kind of build that bond with, you know, with the kid and the staff, with the rest of the employees. Um, I, the police in this town is great as far as the schools, they're always in the schools already, but they've made a commitment to kind of answer that, I appreciate that. I've also talked to Mr. Murray about some other things that we'll talk about probably tomorrow, as far as if there was an incident to happen, or to, you know, kind of like a bag or briefcase or whatever, every, all the information you need, the specs for the building, um, communication devices. I know we also talked about, possibly hooking up our, um, walk-in talkies with the police station, so they can, you know, have access to that, and you guys have that at Triton. So there's always dialogue between the two. But one of the things you'll see on all these reports is the mental health issue about students that are committing some of these, um, horrible acts, and I think Mr. Buckeye talked about a lot, things we do, and I know Ms. Calhanes here earlier, um, but our staff is constantly attending trainings, they're constantly working with kids and communicating with parents, if there are mental health issues that we're concerned about or identified, um, you know, Miss, we did a presentation a couple of weeks back regarding students with, you know, behavioral conditions. We'd love to have more attendance, about, we had about thirteen or fourteen people attend that event.
Yeah, and we're thinking of doing like a mental health wellness.
A series, yeah. Just, just to, and what they do with those things, Mr. Maddie, our social worker, they expose, like they help pick parents, you know, with resources they might not know are available to them, if their child is, you know, they need some help. You know, all our staff has mandatory train, mandatory training through G C N, whether it be suicide training, or, you know, even if it's a bloodborne path, it's in that case, but we're constantly looking to, you know, provide those services for people. So we do have things in place, there's always more things that we want to do. Uh, I know they have mental first aid, the Red Cross, that comes out in those trainings for your, your school district, not only for the kids, but for your, your staff as well, so that's something we're looking into possibly doing, um, in June. So again, we're, we're, I think we're always proactive, but with things like this happening at a national scale, we're such a small world now with the social media, and you see things constantly on the news. But we, I just want to let you know that the things we, not only we do, the things we have in place for moving forward as far as, not only the security issue, but providing help for students and parents that, that.
Just one question, when, when they get into the building, what type of ID do you get to say who they are?
Right now, I know sometimes the staff asks for a driver's license, they have, we don't have like a monitoring, um, guard system. Unfortunately, once the, once somebody would get in, I mean.
Right, I just want, was at the school, they would have people sign in, but they would check to see if the person who signed in was the person who required. And then they start taking, they start looking at the license, they say, you know, that's up to the person that's in there, so.
Usually, I mean.
Specific sign.
Yeah, we have specific sign, yeah, I know, usually presenting something. I mean, usually if there's a, if there's a, students are identified, or if you manage a system, if there is a problem, like they're not supposed to go with, let's say, Mark's not supposed to have access to his son because there's a legal agreement or whatever, you know? That does pop up as well.
Yeah, like I said, once the person's in, you want to make sure whoever signed that signage, is that person?
We do that already, we need the license.
The only time we'll check a license, if it's a, you know, regular, you know? When Ms. Ford has picked up her son, I know Ms. Ford, but if it's, um, if somebody else, we check the license with the contacts in real time, to verify that they're approved contact. So we do that. But we're small, so a lot of them know each other.
Okay.
And can I add, Jeff, from a police, from a police department standpoint, that we retrain every year on Rapid Deployment Act of Shooter. We train within these schools. Um, we train now with the fire department, because that's, that's the newest thing that came out now, medics, not, not the fire department per se, the, the D M Ts and stuff like that. So that's the newest thing that come out, so like, the police will go in first, and then police and paramedics go in second. Um, because, uh, unfortunately, what's happening is, is nobody can get to the people who are injured. So now we're training to get to them as fast as we can, and eliminate the shooter as fast as we can. Sometimes long gone, we've been doing it for years, and it changes every year, and we just did.
I know you've monitored some of our procedures, all the rules that we do. I know you're having it set up for this Friday, I believe. Um, is it lockdown, lockdown procedure?
We work, uh, you know, it's out now. We work, uh, no, but we work with all the schools, we work with.
I'm not worried about that, because I mean, I was actually thinking about maybe.
Yeah, so we do work with all the schools, as you know, we work with Triton and, you know, all the schools, and we'll monitor and see exactly what goes on. Sometimes you find something, sometimes you don't. Most of the times, you know, everybody knows, we're kind of used to what we have to do now, so it's, it seems like it's going pretty well. Um, so, but we are out here, uh, as a police department, trying to support everybody.
And they've been honest with us, like when you see things that aren't, and the feedback you gave us when we first started, like you said we were doing pretty well compared to what you've seen in the past, or not only here, but some other places, so we, we take their suggestions.
Right. Yeah, there was like some odd things that happened a few times, but that's what happens, is the odd thing. You're, you're, like, not here, but at Triton, you have to have your sub, and they won't, they won't be trained as well as your full-time staff. So, uh, there are the things that, that we generally would find. But here, uh, the, the, our schools in, in town have been, have been real, real point.
And I just think that, you know, just so the rest of the Board and the, uh, public knows, the police department like reached out to me, and then I, and, and to Mark, like they were like, okay, they were alert, like, because, like, they wanted to say like, what can they do for us, how can they help us? So I mean, that's just a testament to how dedicated they are for our children's safety, just like we are. Like they, just random officers were coming to me, like, saying, "We need to do this, I think we should do this, we need to get, you know, talk to Mr. Ainucci." And already, they had school one day this week, and there's already a plan in place, so that just goes to show you how, how much our police department cares about, like the safety of our students, so it was awesome.
Thank you for that, and I'll keep you updated when anything, I also sent you the information I shared with Mr. Buckeye, other updates, but that's all.
Thank you. Um, principals' reports, nurses' reports, building and grounds', and special education report, does anybody have any questions? I do. I want to be a Mrs. Jesse. So I was looking at your survey, could you tell me a little bit about that, like what sparked that, why you did that, why you put it out?
Sure. Um, so for those of you who don't know, I sent out a survey to all the Bingham and Downing parents in, I guess it was middle of January. I generated just a list of questions that I, I just want to make sure that I have a pulse on what's going on, and sometimes, I'm always super positive and feeling, everything's always going well, and then I might have to check myself sometimes, like, does everybody else think it's going well, too? So, um, I wanted to come up with some very specific questions that I thought, um, were fair, and would also help me, um, you know, do what I'm supposed to do every day. I'm, you know, responsible for all the students in kindergarten through third grade in this community, I want to make sure that, um, between myself and my colleagues and my staff, that we're doing our very best. So some of the new things that we've done, which is, um, I think that we've enhanced our communication with parents through real time, which have been through text messages and emails and things like that, and I was, I felt that that's been an enhancement, but I wanted to make sure that the parents felt so too, and that was, um, that was acknowledged by, by the community, which was great. And just little things that pop up about homework, and, um, our after-school programs, and our clubs, and, um, just, some basic information that I felt would be great to share with you guys, as well as my staff. Um, and I felt the results were overall very positive, and, um, now I kind of now will maybe dig a little bit deeper with my questions, so we think communication is going[1746.44] So, we think communication is going well. What are the best ways that we should, you know, what are the most well-received, you know, types of communication? I just kinda like keep digging deeper so that I'm, you know, improving, and our staff is improving, and we're also embracing and celebrating all the positive things that we're doing on a daily basis.
I guess I'll ask because, for, like, when I was reviewing it, I, I guess, like, as my board member had, like, ooh, is there an issue? Does she need something, or is there something that we're not doing?
No, it's just, I feel like it is my responsibility to, you know, to not just hear from, you know, my little network of staff and, um, administrators. I wanna make sure that everybody has a voice, because we are really servicing a community. And I just wanted a little bit of confirmation from as many people as possible so that we know that we're, um, doing our best.
So it says there was a hundred and fifty responses?
Yeah.
That's more than the response than the last survey.
It is, and, um, and I did put out a reminder, because I put out the parent survey, and I only received about forty or forty-five responses. I'm thinking, well, that wouldn't be a valid survey to report on then. So I sent a reminder, and, um, and then I got a, a lot more. So I was pleased with a hundred and fifty responses. I mean, I would've been more pleased with about two hundred, but, um, I'd like to promote it a little bit more, send out a second reminder next time. So, um, yeah, I think periodically I'll do that, maybe quarterly, or, um, we, we put a new initiative into place, just general feedback about that. Yeah, so I was, I was really excited to just read the responses. And every, there were specific comments that came back, you know, um, we think Mrs. Cirillo is awesome, whatever. I copied every single comment that was, you know, to an individual, and I sent them, um, in an email to all the teachers. And then, of course, that's always well-received, and that's filling their bucket, which kinda supports our, um, our culture within our building. So, um, yeah, teachers were really happy about that, naming specific teachers and how happy they are, specific children, so, um, yeah, it was great. It was really, you know, and we did have some constructive feedback. It's not always positive, and, and I take that in as well, and I aim to please. So, we'll just kinda keep reaching out and, and learning.
Thanks for sharing it, I mean, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I didn't look at it until today, sorry. And, um, I just wanted to make sure that we were, that you didn't need anything.
No.
All right, any other, yes?
I think I had a lot of parents asking, and they liked that they could get feedback anonymously to stuff, and, you know, feel like they told somebody, but they don't wanna tell you.
Exactly.
No, they told, so there were parents who asked, they don't know I did this, right?
No, yeah, I, I, and, and then I guess they're bad.
So, I think it helps that, you know, you can answer the question, you get more people, right?
Great, I'm glad, yeah.
Thank you. Um, P T I, Mark already mentioned, just make sure Mrs. Wilson knows this by tomorrow. Camden County Educational Services Commission?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay.
I was at the meeting this month, as well as our board member from Waltham Town, too. And, uh, just three things I really wanna report on for all the board. One is the, the boring part, is the software system that they use. They're not, they're not gonna use it after this year. The Camden County Educational Services Commission is so much, it's considered a district in a way, but it's so different than a regular school district, that a lot of the software that's currently being used there is not applicable to the kinds of functions and, and problems they need to deal with and input information. So they're, they are going to a new system come July first. July, just wanted to let you know that. Uh, one that's really interesting, and I hope the superintendent and the board administrator hears this one loud and clear, they are offering a free workshop March first for, uh, anyone that evaluates teachers on the Danielson Evaluation, uh, System. It's a three-hour training program. The most you can send from any district are two people that do evaluations. And I think it's, uh, it's gonna turn out to be probably a very informative and helpful workshop. And again, it's free, maximum number per district is two. They're also, with the help of Camden County Technical School, which makes me feel good, having retired as principal there, uh, and Lethy High School, because those two schools have a television video production program. They are putting together a, a video on the bus evacuation exercises that you have to do. And they found out from the state that, uh, when I was working, we had sixty-three buses. Let me tell you, it's difficult to do an evacuation, uh, procedure with sixty-three buses and all those kids. They're going to put a video together that will be available to any district free of charge that the state will accept, instead of having to do the evacuation system. And we're not a bussying district, but we were a big bussying district. As long as the students and the staff watch that video, they'll, they'll understand what to do in an emergency with an evacuation. So they're gonna put that together and make it available to any school system. The last one, uh, as, as you all know, starting next year, young men and women that are getting a degree in education, uh, they have to go, they have to do more than just the four months of student teaching. It's a whole year experience. Part of it is student teaching, and part of it is our other experiences in the district, activities they're gonna be involved in. Uh, instructional assistant is one of them. Uh, working in the preschool and after-school programs is another way they can fulfill that obligation. Camden County Educational Services Commission is going to try to develop a plan for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, where they would, uh, utilize those students that come into your district and give them the opportunities to, to get some of those other experiences if you're not able or not interested in doing those other, uh, experiences for those, uh, future teachers. As a board member here, I wouldn't support that, because I think we should utilize them completely in our district, and give them all of those experiences by attending our faculty meetings, by going through our staff development program, by using them in our preschool program, our after-school program, uh, using them as substitute teachers. And we go back to what Dan was saying, that way, if a teacher's absent and you had to have a lockdown, they really know the procedures for that lockdown, because they've gone through the training with the rest of the staff. But it's, it's something they're gonna offer for districts that don't wanna be bothered trying to come up with, uh, fulfilling the other obligations that these young future teachers need to fulfill to get their teaching degree. So that's the last item that was discussed. So that is from the Camden County Educational Services, uh, Commission. Uh, I also attended the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. And, um, two things actually took place at this month's meeting. Uh, the first one is significant, that if all of you who know the Dunkin' Donuts on the corner of Schubert Avenue in East Hamrum, uh, they've requested put in for a variance, which was approved. And they're going to enhance that area with a drive-in, drive-up window. Uh, they're gonna put up some high fencing, some additional lighting. People would enter over by the pizzeria on the opposite end, come around the back of the building, and come up. And also, you know how some people can exit off of the property on the Schubert Avenue? Well, while they're, when they're exiting in the evening, those trap, those car lights are going into those three or four houses straight across. No one's gonna be able to exit, that will be an entrance only. So that's gonna be a, a good move for those residents there. So they're gonna be making some changes with these variances, and you'll see those changes probably, I'm guessing, probably over the next six months.
Doesn't bother you?
Uh, the only other thing that, uh, took place, uh, that, that I need to report at from the zoning board meeting, is the, um... They have two plans. One is the master plan. Master plan must be reviewed, it's required, must be reviewed, it's a state requirement, every seven years. Basically, with the master plan, they're making sure that they're, they're following all New Jersey statutes or regulations, and new ones come into place. And then they have a redevelopment plan, that they're gonna open up to the public. This redevelopment plan goes on the Black Horse Pike from the New Jersey Turnpike, uh, to Clements Bridge Road. And they are trying to come up with ways to enhance the businesses that we have on the Black Horse Pike, increase, uh, parking, uh, space for people, to try and do something similar to what they did in Collinsburg, to kinda bring that about. And that's, uh, any, anyone that has property, whether it's a residence or business on the Pike there, will get notice of this meeting, and it will be open to all public. It's going to be in the month of April. So that'll be an interesting meeting, it's probably gonna be, be a packed house. That's all that came out of that meeting. And the only, only other thing I wanted to mention, was that Dan and I attended the, uh, finance workshop on Friday, February the ninth. And you can have a copy of our summary report. Very interesting and enlightened, may I, for sure.
Thank you for representing us, I hope you learned something.
Chaz, um, is there something in writing, like a policy about the one year of student teaching? Could you send me that information?
I don't know if I have it, but, uh, I can probably get the hands on it. And if I don't have it, I'll contact New Jersey School Boards, because they had a workshop in Lang City in the fall that I attended about this.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, okay.
New Jersey School Boards, I think we're...
I believe there is a meeting coming up at Bonaire. We sent people spring dinner, we signed up, the sheet went around, um, the date escapes me. Not till May?
That's May eighth.
May ninth.
May ninth, and I don't, yes.
And, um, also, New Jersey School Works Association has asked us to host a grade dialogue.
That's March.
And that would be in March.
Right, that's March twenty-first.
Yes.
Yeah.
Twenty-first. Is that the one with the eighth graders, the twenty-first?
Yes, the eighth graders. I don't know, I guess they're working on it, the name of the...
We will do a final confirmation in order to register for that event. A, we're hosting it, so we're the ones who do the tables anyway.
Correct.
But we have to register everyone as one entire group. So we have to find out from the eighth grader who selected, who they will be bringing from their family, because, you know, they bring family representatives as well to come and watch. And at that point, we will confirm with each member of who's coming, and make sure everyone's registered for that event.
At least the day after our board meeting.
It is the day, yeah. Our, our board meeting's on the twentieth, and then it's the twenty-first, I have it on my calendar. Uh, also, um, Patty and Naomi, Angel, Chaz, and I, uh, that, just make sure Dr. McCarran knows about the leadership in April the twentieth to the twenty-second. I think that that will be, um, informative. And when I was at the training, when they told me about it, we were registered within thirty-seven seconds, thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you. Um, when I found out about it, um, just make sure there's only a hundred seats open, and it was for anyone who's been like a longtime member and who would like to have some type of leadership position in the future.
Great.
Like, we're president.
We're vice president.
All right, okay, there we go.
I already made a range.
Oh, you have, okay.
I got my confirmation email.
I know you're working on it, and then, just because I don't wanna take a seat up, um, since there's also such a limited, um, supply of seats. So if you can't go, that's fine. Just make sure Mr. Dr. McCarron is as soon as possible, please. All right, negotiations, Angel? Okay. So, property and transportation, are we all ready? I need a motion to approve items numbers one through four.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz. Seconded by Naomi, I have a question. Could you please explain number four to the board, Mr. Ainucci? Because I know that you and I spoke about it, but I don't necessarily know that the full board is aware of what's happening.
I said earlier, we had enough care regarding some projects, of course, during these. We also met about, um, doing some kitchen work, um, in all three buildings to enhance our, um, food and service program. So we'll be able to, um, prepare the food ourselves. A little hard relationship anymore with, um, Black Horse Pike is before we're designing our lunch program. So we're gonna keep things announced. So it's some major renovations, um, for the kitchens, including, you know, whoever you do stations, preparation tables, refrigeration units, and all that kind of fun stuff. But, you know, in the long run, it's more cost effective for us to control things than to rely on others to, 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 to.
And then the other stuff is just the main office stuff that we talked about.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Schwachan?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Shulayga?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes. Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through nine.
Make that. Patty?
Yes.
Two hundred.
You.
Motion made by Naomi?
I'll second.
Seconded by Patty.
I don't know.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Schwachan?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Shulayga?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes.
I did wanna, I know, Ms. Cirillo was here tonight, Ms. Yezzy. Christine, you've been with her four years?
My third.
Third year, yeah, I forgot. She currently serves as a power professional for her Bingham School. She left us briefly to pursue your special education certification, right?
School certification.
Your dual certified now, so we're happy for that. Christine's a very dedicated employee, she does a great job. You can kinda throw her in any situation, uh, with the most difficult situation. She handles it without a complaint, she does a great job. So she'll be filling in, um, on a family leave, I believe, starting in March, once at the end of the year. Hopefully Christine will lead something bigger and better. Hopefully, in our own means schools in the future is a full-time teacher. If not, um, she'd be a great asset to that district. But hopefully we can keep her here, you know, long, since she came here today.
Good luck, thank you for...
Welcome back, thank you.
Under finance, I need a motion to approve items one through seven.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Chaz.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi, questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Schwachan?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Shulayga?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes.
I'll just keep that.
Under curriculum, I need a motion to approve item number one.
I'll make the motion to approve item number one.
Motion made by Patty?
Second.
Seconded by Naomi, roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe?
Yes.
Ms. Schwachan?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Lega?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes, sorry. Under policy and public relations, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through three. Motion made by Angel, seconded by Dan, roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Bebe? Ms. Schwachan?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Lega?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sams? Ms. Spalding?
Yes. This time we're open for public comment, any public comment at this time? There's no public comment?
No comment?
Yes.
I forgot to mention, I know it's important, of course, I wanna congratulate, um, the whole school. Uh, Mr. Feely, still with the staff, who's recognized as a state school of character, so... And if someone wanted to add anything to that, but we're happy for that recognition. I know we're gonna have a banner that's awarded to the school that will be hanged proudly somewhere on the property. I know we're also entering, I believe...
For a national?
For the national.
We'll take it with us.
We'll take it. But it was a school goal that we set in the summer, so we're happy and proud that we achieved it. Speaks highly to our, the state of our education program, but also speaks highly of our students, our staff and our community as far as their great character. So we'll take the feedback they gave us, set a new goal, and aim for that.
Isn't that for three years?
It is, yep. We hold that title for three years.
Thank you. We're, there's no need to go an executive session because Mr. Iainuchi and I discussed everything. We wanted to discuss it in public, everything that was happening with school security because it's important for everyone to hear what we're doing, what they're doing, what everyone is doing to ensure the safety of our students. So there is no need for executive session at this time. Does anybody have anything else that they need to say? So our next, no, our next board meeting is March 20th. Also, please make sure you write down June 5th for that special meeting. That's a Tuesday evening that we mentioned earlier. We'll appropriately advertise that everywhere we need to. Any other questions? If there's no other questions.
I'm sorry, you just said March 20th. Did you know that that's What to Look For at Triton?
Yes, we had our meeting date set for some of those.
What is it, Triton on the 20th?
It's What to Look For. It's an interactive drug and it's basic, Eleanor Kelly, 161 Forest Avenue. I just want to make a comment because I run Municipal Alliance as part of public safety and we're sponsoring this along with Triton and it's called What to Look For. And it's a bedroom, a teenage bedroom, and you go up there, the audience goes up there and tries to find or think they know where the child might have drugs. And it's supposed to be wonderful from six to eight. So I have to be there and I will be able to be here and I'm just, I just want everybody to be aware of this program in Triton. I gave us the, the flyers for that.
Unfortunately, we made our schedule around people's work schedules and they already requested off. So at this time, we're not, we're not going to change our meeting. Just be, I'm sorry about that. But hopefully we, it's not that long because I can't have, people are already missing work and I can't, I, they, they, they need their jobs. They need to be there at night. Unfortunately, there's no.
Six to eight on the 20th at Triton.
And we'll be getting that information out on our social media and our website as well.
I have a question. Would they consider videotaping that program so that we could see it at a later date?
You would have, I would have to go through my Municipal Alliance director and she would have to talk with the people at Triton. She works at Triton.
Yeah, because they have a video of the nation program.
Yes, yes. So that could definitely be a possibility and be open to people who want to do it.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'll definitely tell them.
They, we tried for other nights for that, but Camden County never answered back. Gloucester County's coming, they're doing it for free. I mean, the, the county, Camden County Municipal Alliance is going to pay for it. So they got locked into that date because Gloucester County jumped on the facet of do it because we spoke to Mr. Pillar in the beginning of the year and they were looking to do it in the different schools and were trying to find out what it was, but we felt Triton having it, then everybody, instead of us having it, Triton having it. You get a little few parents. This would get more parents, you know, to go have.
Because I've been to some of the things that they had, the districts held at Highland and there's a ton more parents than we would get here locally. But unfortunately, we, there's only certain specific days that our board, that we would. We are trying to, if you notice, there's new faces here. We're making it, our, our goal as a board to have 100% participation. I mean, we have one board member not here tonight. It's the first meeting she's ever missed because she's ill, ever. On her first meeting she's ever missed. So we're trying to stay locked into our dates just because we're trying to get 100% participation at all of our meetings. So I apologize.
Do how many people at your meeting know where they're at?
Well, and hopefully if our meeting's not that long, we can go over at least for the end of it, so, because we're right down the street. Any other questions, concerns? All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make my people walk through.
Motion made by Patty, seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Dennis.
Oh, Dennis. Sorry, Dennis. All in favor?